As you can see, we have a number of members of our congressional delegation and our lieutenant governor up here. I welcome Senator Risch, Representative Labrador, and our lieutenant governor Brad Little here with us. We will each make some remarks. We also have a special guest, which is a big part of the reason that we were able to have this news conference here today, and that is Maya McGinnis, who is the president of the Committee for a Responsible Federal Budget. This is a nonprofit organization that is very heavily engaged nationwide in trying to help not only America and folks in Idaho, but the United States Congress to recognize the seriousness of the debt crisis that we face and the imminency of the debt crisis that we face, and to help Congress learn or find a path to solve this crisis. And we'll discuss that further. And then we'll throw it open for questions. I understand that this mic in front of me right here will be on at that point in time. If you choose, you can come up and use the microphone to ask questions. This is a news conference, so we invite the members of our news media to be engaged and to work with us, and we appreciate their attendance and participation here today. I also, I'm not going to try to introduce every elected official who is in the room, but there are a few former and current officials, just three, that I am going to single out. I apologize to the rest of you that if I don't single you out. We are honored today to have with us the mayor of Boise, Mayor Beer. We appreciate you having, you being here with us. And we are also honored to have two of our former governors.
Three.
Three. Oh, yeah.
(laughter)
Name Jim?
I think of you as Governor Risch. Now I have to make a little side note here and say Jim and I are great partners in the U.S. Senate. We are, we are very good friends, and I apologize to you. Side note.
It's like my wife says, "Don't talk about it."
The two, the two to whom I was referring are former governors, Governor Cecil Andrews. Cease? Is he outside? Oh, there he is, right over here. And former Governor Phil Bass. Phil? There's a bit of, I think, an eloquence in the introduction of these two former governors being with us because it shows the bipartisanship that we have, and frankly, that we need in this country in order to come to a solution. What I'm going to do is I will make a few remarks, and then we'll go in the order of Senator Risch, Representative Labrador, and Lieutenant Governor Little, and then Maya McGinnis will, I was going to say back clean up, but that would be fifth position, so I guess she will clean up and make her remarks, and then we'll throw it open for question. I think the reason that we have such large attendance here today is because Americans, and especially Idahoans, are increasingly understanding not only the seriousness of our national debt crisis, but its imminency. You've probably heard people in political worlds talk about this problem for years, and you've probably heard it said by many that if we don't stop our profligate spending, the tax-and-spend policies in Washington, that our children and our grandchildren will have to pay a very heavy debt. Well, that's true, but I think that talking about it that way actually creates the impression that the issue is a generation or a decade away. It's not. It could literally be months away, it is certainly only a couple of years away before we face the crisis. The crisis will be when the world bond markets come to the conclusion that the United States is not going to be able to service its debt, and we are increasingly close to that point. If we hit that tipping point, the ability to put together solutions will dramatically shrink, the amount of the damage to the economy will dramatically increase, and the American dream could be lost. I think it's that serious a threat. I believe this is the most serious threat that our nation has ever faced. And when I say that, some people say, "No, the Civil War was the greatest threat," or "There are other World War I or World War II," or "Other great threats." And certainly, I'm not trying to belittle those threats to our nation, but in terms, clearly in terms of an internal threat, there is no greater threat that we've ever faced, in my opinion. I do believe that the American dream is on the line. We are past the point where we can continue to simply try to tax and spend our way out of this problem. Many of you know that I served on the Bowles-Simpson Commission, which about a couple of years ago now, put together a $4 trillion plan. This was a plan that over 10 years would reduce our debt posture, reduce our debt that we would incur by $4 trillion. That plan was one which was based on an agreement that we would recognize that spending was the biggest part of the problem, and therefore should bear the biggest share of the solution, but that there was also a need to reform our tax code and generate a much stronger economy, to take advantage of the opportunity that can exist in this crisis if we will take it, the opportunity to deal with our tax code. So we agreed to a three-to-one ratio, $3 of spending cuts for every dollar of revenue. And then as we moved forward, and as the Gang of Six that I'm sure you've heard about began refining the Bowles-Simpson process, we moved forward to literally reform the tax code in a way that should generate a significant amount, if not all, of that revenue from growing our economy and finding other offsets or tax reductions in the code. People often heard it said, "To broaden the base and reduce the rates in our internal revenue code." Right now, if you tried to create a tax code that was more unfair, more complex, more expensive to comply with, or more anti-competitive to our own United States business interests, you'd be hard-pressed to do it worse than we've done it with our code, in my opinion. And we have an opportunity here in this crisis, if we will take it, an opportunity to create a tax code that is simpler, broader base, fairer, and much more competitive to the United States business interests globally, and to generate an economic growth that will help us to deal with the revenue side of our equation in the solution that we need to put together. We can take similar opportunities on the spending side. Social Security, Medicare, and Medicaid are screaming at full speed toward insolvency. And I often say to groups that the worst option, people are battling in America now over how we should deal with this debt crisis and what a $4 trillion plan should look like. By the way, we now need probably a $5 trillion plan, and that plan will just keep our heads above water. We will need to be much more aggressive than even a $5 trillion plan over time, but we need to get started, and my hope is that we can get to that point. But what I often say to groups is that of all the different approaches and ideas to how to solve these problems, and we do have a robust debate now starting in America about how to do it, the worst option of all is the status quo. The worst thing that we could do as a nation is to not deal with the problem, because if we don't, then the bond markets will. And the day that that happens, then the problem will become much worse, the disaster in the United States economically will become much deeper, the time that it will take to build out of it will be extended significantly, and the opportunities that we talk about that we could take here will be significantly reduced. So I'm hopeful that what will come out of today's press conference is an extension of the debate, an increase in the number of people who are engaged and willing to help participate in moving America to a solution with regard to this debt crisis, and hopefully a solution soon to the problem. With that, let me stop and turn it over to my colleague, former Governor Jim Risch.
Mike, thank you. Well, I'll thank all of you for coming today. I hope the takeaway here today, and I think what Mike is attempting to do here, and Maya also, is to underscore the seriousness of this problem. If you talk to any American, they will tell you, "Oh, yeah, I think the country's in trouble," but nobody really knows how bad it is. I would say only a small percentage of people know how bad it is. I can tell you, after having spent the time I have back there, as bad as you think it is, it is substantially worse than that. Now, let me give you a couple of minutes, just a couple of minutes, to try to convince you that. Everything in Washington, D.C. is done on 10-years basis. I don't know who came up with that idea, but it's ridiculous, because nothing, all they do is talk about, "Well, they're going to do this, do that," and you find out everything happens in years eight, nine, and 10, and nothing happens in the first seven years. So I think of it on a daily basis. Federal government spans, you've all heard the numbers, and these are very general round numbers, but for the fourth year in a row, feds are going to spend about 3.8, they're only going to take in 2.2, and they're going to have to borrow $1.6 trillion. Now, everybody thinks, "Well, the federal government, they got the printing presses, they print the money." They don't. They borrow. They really, really borrow. I went, I've gone and watched them do it. They do it multiple times a day. It's called the Bureau of Public Debt. It's on 9th and 8th Street in Washington, D.C. Unfortunately, you can't get in, the media can't get in, which is a travesty, but it is real borrowing, 3.8, 2.2, 1.6. Let's put it on a daily basis, because that's how I think. About $11 billion a day. And they pay daily, by the way, because, and this is on average, by the way, during the year, they pay daily because it's so much money, they have to pay daily. So they pay about $11 billion, but they only take in about $6.5 billion. So what do they do? They go and they borrow $4.5 billion every single day, 365 days a year, $3.5 billion. When I was governor of this state, and Phil, and Cease, let me put this in perspective for you. When I was governor, the annual budget for the state of Idaho was $3.5 billion for a year. Federal government borrows $4.5 billion every single day. So let's say you take that $11 billion at night, and you start to say, "Well, let's pay the bills and see when we run out of money." You would pay Social Security, you would pay Medicare, not Medicaid, and you'd pay the interest on the national debt, and you'd be out of money. That's what $6.5 billion gets you. Then you've got to go out and you've got to borrow the $4.5 billion. Well, you know, it's staggering. It's absolutely staggering, the kind of problem that this is. Now, what are the solutions to it? You know, I don't want to get any more partisan here than we need to, but there's a lot of us believe it's a spending problem, it's not a revenue problem, and let me prove it to you. The most liberal revenue proposal out there says, "Let's let the current tax rates stand," and by the way, they all expire the end of the year, "let's let them stand for the middle class and for everybody else, but we're going to raise the tax, we're going to actually let the tax cuts expire for the rich." Okay? That's the most liberal proposal out there, the one that they, that they're trying to convince people it's going to save the world. But let me tell you what that gets you. If you do that according to those who are promoting it, say, "We would raise $1 trillion." Yeah, that's over 10 years. In a year, you raise $100 billion. What does $100 billion get you? Nine days of operating the federal government, nine days. You've got another 356 days you've got to worry about the year after you raise the taxes on the rich, as to what they're saying. So that is, I know one thing, that is not the solution. And I'm not, I don't think any of us are here to protect the rich, they take pretty good care of themselves, but nine days is all you get with the most liberal tax-raising proposal that's on the table. But friends, this is a really, really serious problem. It can't go on. I've been there only three and a half years, and the national debt's gone from 13, or excuse me, from $10 trillion up to $16 trillion. And you say that, and everybody looks at you, because nobody knows. Nobody knows what $16 trillion is. All I can tell you is that the people who we listen to that come into our caucus, the economists, be they liberal, be they conservative, Republicans, Democrats, whatever, they tell us, "This can't go on." And so then you talk about the solution, and here we are. But the solution has got to be, that there are going to have to be very substantial cuts in federal spending. Let me close with this. Having been, everything I've done in my life, and having spent the three and a half years back there that I have, let me tell you something, I believe the federal government can't fix this. Only the American people can fix this. The American people built an economy that created the most successful affluent culture on the face of the earth. We can do it again, we can do it, we can get America out of this, but the federal government's got to lower taxes, lower regulations, get out of the way, and let us, as Americans, continue to develop the economy. Thank you very much.
Right. (applause) Jim, you can see that our congressional delegation is kind of fired up about this. That's one of the reasons I'm so glad to be able to serve with the Idaho Congressional Delegation. How do you turn this on, David?
Talk closer.
Talk closer to it? All right. There's no switch. You can see why it's such a pleasure to serve with the Idaho Congressional Delegation, as you can see how fired up we get about it. I ought to, before we go to Raoul Labrador, I should also have mentioned that Mike Simpson would have been with us, but he's ill today, and he is also fighting very hard in Washington in the House of Representatives to make sure that we can put together a comprehensive deal to deal with our debt. Also, I was told to announce that there's an overflow crowd, and we've made at least the audio from this news conference available in the room right across the hall, so if you can stand not looking at us, you can go over and listen to this in the hall if you can't find a seat over here. So with that, I know, that was a joke. With that, let me go to Raoul Labrador.
Thank you, Senator. Thank you for putting this together. I'm actually a poor substitute for Mike Simpson. He's the one who was supposed to be here today. I'm just going to be very brief. They have identified the problem that we're facing, and the reason we have a problem is because we have 10,000 new people retiring every single day, reaching the age of 65. We keep growing our spending, we keep growing the things that we're doing in Washington, D.C., and governments are getting larger and larger and larger. Last 10 years, the government has doubled in size in the amount of spending that we're spending. Those are the things that we're facing today, and those are the things that we need to address in Washington. A lot of people here in the media and in other places get mad at me because I say that everything has to be on the table, and we need to stop picking winners and losers in Washington, D.C. We need to stop doing the things that we protect our states at the expense of every other state, that we protect our districts at the expense of every other district. And I've taken some pretty tough votes in Washington because I think everything needs to be cut, and everything needs to be put on the table. But I'm going to leave you with this. The other day, I was speaking to a young woman in Coeur d'Alene, Idaho, and she said, "You know, I've been talking to a lot of congressmen, a lot of people in politics, and they're always really pessimistic. Why is it that you're optimistic?" And I'm always optimistic because I have lived the American dream. I have watched my family live the American dream, and I think America is the greatest nation on the earth. And if we all remember, and I'll finish with this, Winston Churchill once said, and I'm just going to paraphrase, "Americans always do the right thing after trying everything else."[1026.73][1026.73](laughter) So Americans have tried everything else, and I think Americans will do the right thing by doing, realizing that we have to cut spending, we have to cut regulations, we have to have energy independence, and we have to do the things that will make America once again prosperous and the greatest nation on the earth. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Raoul. You make a very important point there, that everything must be on the table, and I think Americans are increasingly understanding that. If we can reach that level of consensus in the country, I think we can put the solution together. It's a key understanding, though, and frankly, many Americans don't yet agree that their part of whatever the budget is should be a part of the solution, and that's one of the reasons why we're going around the country and delivering this message. With that, let's talk to an Idaho official, our lieutenant governor, Brad Little.
Thank you, Senator, and to the delegation, I think it was Simpson-Bowles, I think it was Simpson-Bowles, said, "The days of deficit denial are over." And we all, and a lot of people in this room I've talked to over and over about this, I think we are to that point, but the problem is we have not found the pathway to get out of that hole we're in. Just briefly, you know, when I talk to people, whether they be businesses or individuals, and this almost invariably is the first or second thing they want to talk about, besides maybe some specific issue, it's all about certainty. What are taxes going to be? What's the inflation rate going to be? What's the value of the dollar going to be? What's the inflation rate going to be? Will we be able to borrow money? What's the value of my home going to be? And they all tie to this, to this issue. We've got, in the near term, we've got a fiscal cliff coming up at the end of this year that frankly, a lot of people call it a fiscal cliff. I think it's a road bump compared to some of the other, a speed bump compared to some of the other issues. They talk about $16 billion, but if you, if we require the federal government to amortize their Social Security, Medicare, Medicaid debt like we do an insurance company, the number gets to be incomprehensible, 70, 80, or 90 trillion dollars. And that's what I wake up at night thinking about, all the hard-working men and women of Idaho, and what that's going to be. But I, you know, my counsel and advice, what I hopefully reflect from the people that I talk to, is just give us a pathway. Just tell us what the pathway is, we can get there. As several of you alluded to, we have the ability to do this. Just for example, the 40% that you borrow right now, I shouldn't say you collectively, that we as Americans borrow, about half of the money we spend in Idaho is federal money. We spend a lot of time talking to Idaho about the general fund, but between the cities, the counties, the state, there's about half of that that comes one way or another, the mayor knows about it, that comes from federal money. If we just took away that 40%, that would be a 15% in all government spending in the state of Idaho. But we went through a cut like that a couple of years ago, and by and large, if we have the time, if we have the roadmap, if we have a little rainy day money where we can do it, we can do that. We in the state of Idaho, and I'm speaking only for the lieutenant governor's office and my massive budget and huge staff, that we, we can take a 15% cut, our share of what we're borrowing right now, if we've got enough time to plan for it. There's some other parts of the federal government, and that at least would put us at a net zero gain, but that's a start. But I think the reaction of the consumers, of the individuals, of the families and the businesses, the roadmap going ahead would be such a dynamic economic force, a lot of that growth we need because we have to continue to grow the economy. If we absolutely stop growth in the economy, our ability to get ahead of this curve, to change the direction of these lines, the trajectory of the debt goes away. So I wish I came here with a great answer. I know it's going to take a lot of minds that are coming from different areas and have different constituencies, having to come together, but the time is short before we have to have a pathway going ahead, and that's, Senator, that's what I hear from people of all walks of life and businesses all over the state of Idaho, is we know what we have to do, just give us a pathway, and the only thing I can guarantee about it is nobody's going to like it.
Thank you very much, Brad. Your comments are truly meaningful to me because, as you just said, the state can do it, the state government can do it, can participate. It's an attitude, attitude like that that I pick up from Idahoans across the board from every walk of life when I talk to them. They tell me, "Look, we understand the threat we face, and we understand that everything's got to be on the table. We simply ask that it be fairly done." And I think that's the responsibility, one of the major responsibilities that Congress has to face in trying to work out this solution. As I said, not doing something will be the worst option we could pick. And with that, let me turn to Maya McGinnis and give her just a short introduction. As I indicated earlier, Maya is the president of the Committee for a Responsible Federal Government. Now, this has been around, this nonprofit organization's been around for 20, 30 years, but recently has become, I think, the major player on a non-elected official basis in the United States in terms of trying to facilitate putting together a comprehensive solution to our debt crisis. And correct me if I'm wrong, Maya, but the Committee for a Responsible Federal Government doesn't necessarily push any particular solution, any particular plan, but is working to do everything it can, A, to educate the country, and B, to then help facilitate our policymakers in Washington, D.C., and others in the states and other parts of the country, to help put together the momentum toward achieving a resolution of this problem and putting a deal together. And Maya does and will be traveling around the country, working with people, and is currently engaged in a very, very extensive effort on behalf of, not only the committee, but on behalf of America, to try to take this message to the country, and Idaho's the first stop on your trip. We appreciate you, I call it a trip, first stop on your endeavors, and we appreciate you selecting Idaho as your first as you move around the country to help us put together a solution. Now with that, let me turn to Maya McGinnis.
Thank you. Thank you very much, and I will keep my comments short because so many important points have been covered, but it is terrific to see people come out today because I think the clear first step in all of this is having a national, a real national discussion about what it's going to take to fix the debt, and an acknowledgement of that it's going to be hard. So the starting point, (laughter) okay, the starting point, we face the most predictable crisis we could know. We know we are hurtling towards a tremendous debt-driven crisis in this country if we fail to act. And the situation with the deficit and debt are so serious on so many different fronts, right? If you think about how the massive amount of borrowing that we've been doing for so long, far too long in this country affect us, they affect the economy in that they make it so much more difficult to borrow and invest, whether it's in your family or for your small business, or for the major businesses that are kind of the backbone of this economy. They take that money, and the government borrows it, and it's not available for private borrowing at the same cost. They affect your households, so it affects how, it's a kitchen-table issue so much more than I think people realize, in fact, that the fact that it has a profound effect on how much it costs to send your children to school, to borrow for a home, to plan, to know what you have going forward as you are planning for all the things, retirement, whether you want to take time off from work to raise a family, those things are affected by the stability and the economic environment of the deficit and debt. They affect the next generation, right? There is no greater calling in this country than our job is to leave the country stronger and better off for the next generation, for our kids. And basically, what we've been doing for years, it's this simple, is we have been saying, "We're going to spend the money on a lot of things, and we're not going to pay for it, and we are going to give that bill to the next generation." And it's reached the point where, because that money hasn't been spent in ways that have grown the economy, we face the very real risk of handing the next generation's, you know, a much weaker economy, and that just shouldn't be acceptable to any of us. We face a real, I think, risk in sort of getting this economic recovery back on track. So the debt issue and the jobs issue are so related in that we will not have a recovery until we have the stability of kind of a multi-year debt deal that's in place, and people understand, and importantly, businesses understand what they can plan for, so they can start investing and hiring again, which is such a core part of this recovery. And then the final risk that wasn't really true so long ago, I don't think, is we're bumping up against the real likelihood that we could have a fiscal crisis in this country. And that is just sort of, it's the most self-imposed damage we could do to our country, is to actually have the kind of crisis you've seen in other countries that you never thought would come here, but where suddenly interest rates are soaring, and we can't get up ahead of the problem. And so there are many threats of not making changes. Secondly, we face this fiscal cliff at the end of the year, and that means we need to get our act in order quickly. We need to figure out how we're not going to let all these tax cuts expire and the sequester hit, but we also need to figure out how we're not going to do what unfortunately, no offense, Washington folks, I guess I'm a Washington vote, but what we see so often, which is we punt. We cannot punt when it comes to the slam dunk. We have to use this moment to move forward in figuring out how to fix this problem. And then finally, I think one of the challenges we face is that we all have different choices of how we would fix the problem. There's no question that things are polarized in Washington right now, and people have different choices about how they would fix it. But the truth is, the thing worse, and I think you all made this point, the thing worse than putting in place a plan that's not your first choice or your favorite plan would be is if we failed to make changes. And if we are hit with some kind of fiscal crisis, if we wait so that we don't get to make these kinds of changes on our own terms, but so that they're forced upon us by our creditors, that is, that is just a really damaging situation where nobody will preserve all the core values that they're trying to get in place. So what I think the good news is, we actually do have the kind of sense of what needs to happen. We know that a deal has to be big enough to fix the problem, and $5 trillion, I think that's right, it has to be at least $5 trillion in savings over 10 years, otherwise it won't actually be a real fix. We know that we have to address the core problems in the budget. Healthcare costs are growing so fast, they're squeezing out all the other parts of the budget, and they're costing all of us too much. The aging of the population, which you mentioned, puts huge massive pressures on the budget. We have to figure out how to do that, and we have to reform the tax code, and perhaps the terrible shape that the current tax code is in gives us the opportunity to reform it in a way that can help the fiscal situation and grow the economy. But to make the point you made, the truth is, any deal that saves $5 trillion is going to have plenty of it, plenty of things in it that we're all going to hate, because it is not going to be fun to put together a $5 trillion deal that saves money, because what we've been doing for so long is all the easy part, you know, the borrowing, that's easy. This is really kind of paying paper, and it's going to be very difficult, and we're going to have to find a way to bring the country together so that... And we're going to have to find a way to bring the country together so that, instead of fighting about the parts we don't want, because there are plenty of things we will all not want, we're willing to do this in time before it's forced upon us. So what we're doing is we've launched this campaign, it's the Campaign to Fix the Debt. We are working with members in Congress, we're going to the states, we are building business associations and former members of Congress and community activists, all different points of view, trying to facilitate a discussion that people have, because, guess what? People are going to disagree. The ARP is going to have a different opinion than different groups, the Tea Party and the other people, many of the people who have helped put this issue on the agenda aren't going to have the exact same solution, but what we can't do is let ourselves not have any solution at all. So we're going to try to have that discussion in as many ways as possible and really push Congress to fix the debt. Because if we don't do this quickly, we're going to have that fix pushed upon us. So my hope is that as we go around and talk to people, we'll hear from people about what the best way to proceed on this is, but we'll also acknowledge the realities, that this is going to be something that if we fail to act, the consequences of an action are so serious for the country. But if we do put a plan in place, that is going to strengthen the economy, that is going to grow the economy. We can do so in a way that preserves the core values of a strong economy that protects people who depend on different programs. We can do it in a way that preserves a lot of the core values by doing it on our own terms rather than waiting too long. So my hope is that working with great members of Congress who've really led this discussion, and working with people across the country, we can show members of Congress that we want them to act and not delay on this.
Oh, there we go. All right, well, thank you. Now that we've had an opportunity to make our statements, we have built in some time here to do some questions and answers, and if there are those of you who would like to ask a question, please come forward. I see hands coming up all over. Why don't you kind of get lined up here to ask a question at the microphone? Well, there is a mic, there is a thing?
Goes up and down.
First of all, I want to thank you all for coming here and servicing this issue that we in the business community know is right for us. My name is Terry Jones, I'm a member, I'm a dairy farmer, I had been with all of us in the years past. I go to the bank, the first thing he says is, "What's your budget?" Mia said, "Here, just votes, vote, we need to fix the budget." Would you, Senator, just tell me why we haven't had a budget for three years?
Two words, Harry Reid. You can only vote on what Harry Reid puts on the table. What we did is we forced a vote, because there's an Arkenian rule that allows the minority to force a vote on the president's budget. So we voted on the president's budget. It got zero votes, none from the Republicans, none from the Democrats. We have a, the House that the Republicans are in charge of have voted since the Republicans have been in charge and put a budget on the table every year. We can't do that in the Senate. That's all I can tell you.
You know, and the only thing I would add is, at the same time we were able to force the vote in the Senate, and that's, you're right, we haven't had a budget in the Senate for three years. And it's because of this gridlock that Jim just described. But part of it is that Senator Reid does not want to have to force those kind of tough votes on his caucus right now, in my opinion. But at the time we were able to force a vote on the president's budget, we also voted on two or three other budgets, including the House budget. None of them got the votes necessary to pass. It's a terrible, terrible circumstance in the Senate.
Mike and I both voted for the Paul Ryan budget, we got a chance to vote. In fact, I think both of us voted for the Pat Toomey budget, which is a little more conservative. Even Ryan's budget only, never balances. We got one that balanced in 10 years, or seven years, Pat Toomey.
Good afternoon. I guess you know me, but for the audience, Wayne Hoffman, the executive director of the Idaho Freedom Foundation. A number of our members in the room, and of course, we work diligently and try to promote free market principles, and I'm glad to hear, whenever I see a member of Congress talking about free markets, it just, it warms my heart. But I also wanted to ask, we're talking about entitlement spending, and a lot of what we do at Freedom Foundation is geared toward what happens here in this building at the state legislature, the governor's office. And next legislative session, we'll be confronted with whether the state should create a state health insurance exchange, and whether to expand Medicaid. Now, on both those issues, the insurance exchange is the vehicle by which billions of dollars in new subsidies, new entitlements, will be transferred by virtue of paying for insurance premiums and providing tax breaks to people who buy insurance premiums. The other, on the Medicaid expansions, we're being told, if you do the expansion to Medicaid, you'll have 100% of this paid for by the federal government over the next three years. And I'm very skeptical of that. I think people ought to be skeptical of it, I think legislature should, the governor should, but I want to hear your opinion on those two issues.
Well, Wayne, I'll start out. I too am skeptical, there is a promise in Obamacare of a three-year, 100% federal deal. You remember, that's, I think, what Ben Nelson got the Nebraska exemption on, if I remember right. Yeah, which caused a lot of the understanding in America to focus on the fact that there was a huge cost element being pushed off onto the states. I don't think that anybody can trust that the federal government will continue to pay 100% of the increased cost that Obamacare puts out in its plan after that three-year period. I think that states will have to assume that they're going to begin assuming increasing portions of that, if not all of it, rather rapidly. And the numbers we had before us at the time we were doing the debate over the Obamacare legislation indicated that most states would literally be bankrupted over a period of time if that were to happen. So I think you have a very legitimate cause to be very concerned.
Well, I didn't vote for that stuff in the first place, that was part of Obamacare. I would say this, I, you know, I spent almost 30 years in the state senate, and sometimes governor and lieutenant governor. I always hated people from Washington DC coming to giving me advice as to what to do in the state. So we got a lot of state legislators in here, I'd lobby them. I didn't vote for it, I guess they can either follow my lead or not, but I'm not going to tell them what to do. I don't think anybody from Washington DC ought to come and tell the state what to do.
Wayne, I have made it pretty clear, I have advised the governor and the legislators to really look closely at the exchange issue, because I think the media and some people are misleading the state, trying to make them believe that this is the true state exchange. As you know, Utah had a state exchange, and they're being told now that their state exchange does not comply with Obamacare. So I'm not going to tell the state what to do, they can make their own decisions, but I have done the best that I can to let them know what is hidden in Obamacare, because there's some major problems that we have with Obamacare. It's going to increase the cost of a lot of different things. And let's assume for a second that the Medicaid issue is funded 100%, which I don't believe, like Senator, I don't believe it will be, but let's assume for a second, that's 100% of 42% that's being borrowed every single day. I think Jim did a very good job of explaining how much we're borrowing, said, "Is that really what we want? Do we want to incur more debt in the United States to expand that program?" And these are all questions that need to be asked, and the state legislators jointly with the governor and lieutenant governor need to make these decisions. But the only one who has an essay on some of these things is sitting right here.
Thank you, Wayne. Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it.
Hello, my name is Jennifer Carter, I'm from Boise, Idaho. Before I ask my question, I just want to correct, there is no Obamacare, it's the Health Care Affordability Care Act. It's not Obamacare. That was made up by people to have a negative connotation that didn't want to vote for it. And so by using the word Obamacare, it's misleading.
Can I correct you for a second?
Go ahead.
Is the Patient Protection and Affordable Care Act, and Obamacare neither protects patients nor makes affordable care?
The issue was you using the term Obamacare. My point was that as elected officials, you're using the term Obamacare over and over again, and I just wanted to make sure that if we're going to talk about legislation, let's do it properly. At any rate, just actually to quote you, you said, "Too many people are retiring, everything needs to be cut on the table." A figure that was thrown out is that federal government borrows $4.5 billion a day. The liberal solution is to expire tax cuts for the rich. You say that that would only provide $100 billion per year, and that's only nine days of federal spending. Who in this room wouldn't want $100 billion only? So does that justify not getting those tax cuts because it's only $100 billion? Just a point. The other question, the only other thing I have to say is this, if everything, Senator Labrador's on the table, and everything, shouldn't that also include, in addition to cuts, redistributing funds that help get the Americans on their feet be considered? Like access to health care, better education, safe drinking water, services to help families provide their children with tools needed to be productive, and adequately prepared to help Americans get on its feet? Cutting across the board is to take away access to social services, including health care and improving education. And that means we're essentially cutting off two legs of a three-legged stool. And people in the middle class feel like the government is cutting off the legs of the middle class, so we remain paralyzed while the richest appear to have grown extra legs, because they're moving rather quickly and we're not. So all we're ever hearing is about cutting. And I'd like to know, with your solution, bipartisan, in a bipartisan fashion, let's talk about redistributing. There's a lot of spending going on, and it's not going to the people who elected you.
Let me take the first cut at that, I'm sure there's probably a lot who want to jump into that, but the bottom line here is, this is not going to be easy. And the fact is that everybody would like to just go on, I don't know that everybody would, but a lot of people would like to just not solve the problem. But for every issue that you pointed out, as I said earlier, the status quo is going to damage that particular interest worse than doing nothing. So then the question is, should everything be on the table? I do believe it should be on the table. That does not mean that Congress should not engage in prioritizing. There are some federal programs that should be 100% cut, eliminated, and removed from the budget. There are federal programs that have some justification, and we can all, you know, debate among ourselves about which ones those are. Some should be not totally eliminated, but significantly reduced. Others maybe should be held, frozen at current levels for a period of years. There are some that may need to be enhanced.
Like education, perhaps.
And we can all take, you know, point out our priorities in that process. But the suggestion that everything has to be on the table, and everything must to some extent take its share in the solution to the problem, does not mean that it has to be pro rata across the board. It means that Congress should still have the opportunity to make judgments about where priorities should be. And we may or may not agree with where those judgments are, but the bottom line is that we need to achieve certain levels of reduction of our debt, or every program that we see is going to have much more serious damage done to it.
So are you saying that redistributing funds is also on the table in addition to having--
I don't know what you mean by redistributing funds. If you mean setting priorities, yes, but if you're saying--
I heard from Senator Labrador, everything needs to be on the table, and everything needs to be cut. There needs to be cuts everywhere. And I'm saying there are some programs like educating our children and health care that needs to get revamped and funded. Other things like military spending in one regard you may need to be changed, that's not my fault, it's yours. What I'm saying is thinking through and not just eliminating everything on the table.
If your question is, must Congress set priorities and some things be given greater priority than others in the budget, the answer is yes. If the question is, should there be some programs that are totally exempt from participating in the solution that we put together, probably not. Probably they would, I don't know that there is a program that can expect to achieve the same rate of budget support that it has in the past decade. We just don't have the financial resources to do it.
And you ask a really important question, and I think this is what people don't understand about the federal government. You keep mentioning education. In my opinion, the federal government has no role in education. It's to be done at the state level. And I'll tell you why. Washington DC continues to tell Idaho, "This is how you should spend your federal money." They act like the money comes from them, like it doesn't come from the taxpayers. If we actually allowed this money to come here locally, and we could create our own rules and regulations on how to spend that money, we could use that much more efficiently. There's estimates out there that we're actually wasting between 10% and 20% because of all the federal mandates that we have. It's the same thing in education, it's the same thing in road building, it's the same thing in all these areas. With the same amount of money that we're spending right now in education, we could actually get more done if we could control it at the state level. So those are all the priorities that we need to realize. I think you and I, I have five children in the school system, so it's not like I want to cut education. I want them to have clean water, clean air, I want them to have all those things. It's not like I want the world to be a worse place, I want the world to be a better place. But experience and history shows me that when we allow the free market to work, when we allow people to thrive, to let government get out of the way, government actually receives more revenues, not less revenues. And we can actually do the things that we need to do to make America prosper. Thank you.
Thank you for being here.
Well, thank you. We try to listen to the voters, and with all due respect, and I do respect your point of view, I'm totally disagreeing with it. I don't want anything to do with a government that even thinks about redistributing assets and property.
Good afternoon, my name is Jeff Wright from Boise County. I guess, with all due respect to the panel, I have a slightly different take on where we sit at in the situation. I first got directly involved with this more than 15 years ago, after Congress passed the Budget Act that allowed them to start borrowing from the 24 surplus funds in the budget to buy down the deficit. It was obvious at that time that this problem was on the horizon. The math currently involved at where we sit right now between unfunded liabilities and principal liabilities right now probably forecloses, if you'll excuse the worst use of that word, forecloses much of what people think we can do from here on out. A lot of our efforts are going to be generated, unfortunately for the previous speaker, simply by the physics of economics. And I don't think there's going to be a hell of a lot come out of the lame duck session before the end of the year on the seven major items that have to get put to bed before December 31st. But my question goes down to, and I asked this of General Peter Pace in September of 2008, at a conference in Colorado Springs when he was outgoing joint chief. And I asked him, and I said, "General, could you," and this was 2008, I said, "What is the Defense Department going to do the day that the Treasury cannot sell a T-bill to the open market? What are they going to do?" Okay, well, the same applies to the welfare side of the equation, as applies to the warfare side of the equation. And I don't think that there's, the choices that are left here and the options that are on the table are going to preclude much action. So my question is, is that, and I think Governor Otter and Lieutenant Governor took a step in the right direction, when they told the departments and agencies, "You better look at a budget cut coming, okay? But it's going to be, it could be a lot worse than 15%, 20%." So my question is, with all the entanglements between the state agencies and the federal agencies and the portion of the budget, I would like to hear from both state and federal elected officials, how exactly we're going to disentangle ourselves the day we cannot sell a T-bill to the open market, and the only place we can sell it is the Federal Reserve?
It's a good question. We're to the panel up here, we need to give quicker answers because we've only got about 10 or 11 minutes left, and we've got a lot of people standing in line.
Yeah, let me, first of all, I wish every American had an understanding like you do of what's going on at the federal level. I can't answer the question of what's going to happen when they can't sell T-bills. I went and watched the auction when they did this, they do it for 30 minutes, and most of the bidding takes place in the last 10 minutes. And I asked them, I said, "What happens if you don't get covered?" And they all laughed, and they said, "Well, that can't happen, it's never happened before." And I said, "Well, what happens when you push the button, nobody will loan you money?" And they said, "Senator, if that happened," they said, "Every market in the world would freeze up in moments, including our own." Where do you go from there? I don't know where you go from there, but I asked them how close they've ever come, once they came within 28 seconds of not getting covered in the fall, early fall of 2008.
I guess my question is, if you tie it to the past, is that between the states and the federal government, there are, this is not, this is not an option.
That's too antiseptic of thinking about this. I mean, you're thinking about one very small aspect of what happens when things freeze up. I mean, this is going to be systemic through Americans, it's going to be systemic through the world, if indeed they can't sell the United States money.
Well, that might have the last word here.
And the situation you're describing is how a fiscal crisis begins. So what happens is if you can't sell those Treasuries, they just offer to pay more. Because the federal government gets the first dibs on-- Because the federal government gets the first dibs on dollars, and this is how interest rates suddenly start to spike up, and you have a crisis. And just to quote a number we were talking about today, for every one percentage point increase in interest rates, it would add over a trillion dollars in interest payments we would owe over the next 10 years. So we are talking about how to get a $5 trillion deal. The super committee, you'll recall, was unable to come up with just over $1 trillion in savings. Every one percentage point increase will add a trillion to our bill for nothing but interest payments. And this is just one of the points why, if we wait until markets force us to do it, not only, the federal government will get its money, it will be paying much higher rates, but none of us will be able to borrow, businesses will not be able to borrow, and the recession that we just saw will be nothing compared to kind of the crisis we would put ourselves in in that scenario.
Yeah, that's probably true. Yes, sir, you're next.
Thank you. I'd like to be more specific. Subsidies for ethanol and other renewable projects. The 1603 program has given Idaho wind developers over $300 million in the last three years. And yet, in committee, Finance Committee, recently, you voted in favor of renewing that, not as that square with reduced equal budget.
Well, in that, in that particular context, it was an extension of, I think, 40 or 50 of our business tax exemptions that are, I thought, critical for our industry right now. We tried to weed out some of them, some got weeded out, some didn't, and so I had the tough decision. And it was one of those close calls for me, as to whether to vote against the package because it wasn't as perfect as I wanted, or whether to vote for it because it had a lot of very powerful, and I thought, pro-business tax policy in it. I ultimately decided to vote for it, but you're right, there are provisions in it, some of which you identified, actually, the ethanol provision was not in that one. But there were provisions in it that I think could be cleaned out, and ultimately, we will clean them out.
And can I just make a quick break, a point on that as well? Those are the kinds of tax breaks, and there are many, many more of them, and there are many that are popular and that affect all of us. But if you are willing to truly contemplate how you're going to get rid of those tax breaks, the credits, the deductions, the exemptions, and the exclusions, we can broaden the tax base and bring rates down so much lower. At Simpson Bowles, they looked at something called the Zero Plan. Well, what if you just got rid of all tax breaks? And you could bring the rates down, I believe it was 8 and 12, the high rate would be 23, I mean, massive reductions in rates, which would just open up a huge growth for, because of the lower rate reductions, and be able to use a lot of money to also close the deficit. So they're going to be tough calls on tax breaks, but if we're going to talk about real tax reform, that's exactly where we're going to need to look.
And Maya makes another good point. The bill that we put out will keep the current tax structure from being picked apart without achieving rate reduction at the same time. I think it's very critical, and as I said earlier in my remarks, we need to reform our tax code. But we need to reform it in a way that just, doesn't just raise taxes for everybody, but instead utilizes the revenue from the reform to reduce rates. And the opportunity to do that was preserved by the vote that I cast.
It's not going very well.
You have a lot of special interests, and this is why I actually agree, one of the things I agree on with the Simpson Bowles Commission is to go to zero everything out. I believe completely that we need to get rid of all the tax breaks, and actually lower the rates significantly. And then, we can have a debate about every specific tax break individually. And people will know, if I give this group a tax break, that means everybody's taxes are going to be raised over here. And make that, have that debate in Washington DC. It's one of the most frustrating things I have had over the last year and a half. I assumed that we were going to have a vote on a clean bill on day one, that we were in Washington DC, and we didn't. And I'm going to disagree with you, Maya, a little bit on the lame duck session. I think that is the worst possible path for us to have this debate. During the lame duck session, if you look at the last three or four lame duck sessions, what the American people have not come out on top in every one of those lame duck sessions. I think we have had major problems. I think we need to let the election happen, and in January, the American people will make a decision in November. They will decide whether they want to go down the same path that we're on, or whether they want to have a new government in Washington DC. I believe, and I hope, that we're going to have a new government in Washington DC. But that decision will be made by the American people, and I don't think people who will be unelected by the time of the lame duck session should be making decisions that will affect the future of America.
Well, Maya responded with the last question.
I'll make the point, I've always thought that about the lame duck. You don't get another way out to make the massive decisions. My only concern is, if we don't do something during the lame duck, we're going hurdling over a fiscal cliff, right into a recession. Or if we extend all of these policies, and Congress does what it does too often, just says, well, look, the straits we put on ourselves, we will be downgraded. We will be downgraded, and we will pay a huge price. So I don't think we should make the major decisions in the lame duck. We need time to do that in an open process. But we have to do something that shows, we're going to take the first step to treating this as the real problem this time. No more punting.
And I agree with that. I think it should be done the first quarter of the year. Whoever is in charge needs to make these tough decisions. All right, we've only got about five minutes left. Let's go ahead.
Gary Smith, Star Idaho. Number one, I want to thank you for doing this, and Lieutenant Governor, I would appreciate if this audio could be made available to the people of Idaho.
I believe it is. We're streaming on the internet right now, and I believe the audio will be made available.
If we can have that, that would be great, because this word, this, what you people have done, and to get the word out, to get people concerned, needs to be spread throughout the whole of Idaho, and I understand you're going across the country. My question is about waste and fraud. I know there's a lot about cutting back and things, but there is so much waste and fraud that we read about every day, that I don't understand. It just doesn't make sense. Two weeks ago, I read about $5 billion being written by the IRS last year to fraudulent tax returns. $5 billion. One household got over 600 returns sent to them. If I try and sign up for Costco for a second password, they won't let me in.
That's true.
But, I mean, it sounds funny, but there is so much that we hear about this every day. And what I don't hear about, and what I'm asking you, is that when that hits the press, I expect within two weeks to see a list of people that have been arrested, or action that has been taken. It seems like we read about it, and nothing happens. So I would ask you to take this back. If there is not a fraud committee, or if somebody is not checking on this, that should be the first thing you do. There is so much with $5 billion in one year of fraudulent tax claims. It's ridiculous.
Agreed.
We did it in the state of Idaho. The governor and lieutenant governor, I'm not sure exactly, and I don't have the details, but we put together a group of people to go back and look at tax returns, and I think, Lieutenant Governor, it was like $14 to $16 million that was found, money that was due to the state of Idaho. We should be doing the same thing at the federal government. I have made jokes about this, that if you would give me 10% of everything I recover, I'll set up a business tomorrow, give me the same privileges of the IRS to go in and start looking through every agency, you could do it. And just one last point on the agencies. In this very building, I was at a committee meeting, and someone brought up about the EPA. And what would happen if we did away with the EPA? And there was a gentleman from Fish and Game there, and we asked him, we said, do you think the people of Idaho would immediately go out and start dumping trash, oil, and things into it? And he said, no, we wouldn't allow that to happen. This is Idaho, the people of Idaho wouldn't want it. So I agree with education. I believe the number was like, if every dollar we send to the federal Department of Education, we get 66 cents back. That's crazy. That is absolutely ridiculous. We should be using that and doing it here at our own level. So, thank you very much for this, and making the audio available.
By the way, we are really out of time, and we're going to have to leave in just a few minutes, but I just wanted to say, on the waste, fraud, and abuse, and the duplication that we have in Washington, it's not something that's unknown. And we are working to aggressively put that on the table. As you might know, the gridlock in Washington is keeping us some progress on that, but that's...
That would be the headline that I would like to see. Those 600 people in one account, one house that, I'd like to see that money returned.
Now, for those who are still in line, we obviously, I apologize, are not going to be able to get through all the questions, but we'll probably just do another one question. I apologize, because we all have other places that we cannot avoid. So, yes, Senator, do you have a suggestion?
I do, actually. There's a town hall being held this Friday at Capitol steps. Each of you have been invited. Unfortunately, Representative Simpson couldn't come, but I would encourage others who have things that they want to say to attend, it's at 5 o'clock this Friday.
Okay, that's a good thing, at 5 o'clock this Friday. And for those behind the gentleman who's in the front of the line right now, I apologize, we won't be able to get your questions here. But if you will submit your questions, you can submit them to our office, Lindsey, and we can get them to the other members of the panel. And we will get you answers to your questions. I apologize for that. One of the problems we always have in a town meeting format like this, is we run out of time before we run out of interest and questions. So I apologize to those who won't get to ask your questions today. Yes, sir, you'll get the last question.
Nice to see you all here. Thank you for coming. I just have two quick things. One, every time the government makes it available...
Can you lean down a little bit, Larry?
I just have two things. One, every time that there's been more money available for the government, and this is at all levels, I don't know if you remember, Representative Rich, I came to you 20 years ago, and suggested that you stop the spending growth. And at that time, I proposed a, by percentage, that the government, government could only grow at a percentage as fast as the economy. And your answer to me was, well, what will we do with all the extra money? But anyway, every time there's more money available, it gets spent. And I've seen this at the city level, the county level, the state level, the federal level. Why can you guys not go back there and immediately cap the dollars that you're spending? Don't spend any more next year than you spent this year. And start there. You know, the special interests, you know, are going to scream, you know, all over the place about their cuts. So don't start with cuts, just start with, stop the spending, you know, right where we're at. The economy grows, even when it's, even when it's in the sad shape it's at now, it grows. So if you just take that step as a place to start, then go back at the cuts, and restructuring the tax code and all of that. But just immediately stop the growth of the spending, you know, not, not reduce the growth of spending, that seems to be a big...
Freeze it.
Yeah, but absolutely freeze it. Do not grow it. And I know there's some things that grow, you know, social security payments, whatnot, you know, there's probably going to be some things that have to grow by virtue of the program needs to grow. But that's by far, you know, the exception of...
I think your advice is very well taken. And in fact, in both the House and the Senate, there's been legislation recently called